Call to order for the 2021 Watertown Special Council meeting to propose the budget for next year. We will go to our finance officer, Kristin Bobzine, to call the roll.
Okay. Beeler? Beeler. Danforth? Holene?
Here.
Paulson? Shetty?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Villahauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. A quorum is established. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Councilman Villahauer, seconded by Councilman Beeler. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to the regular agenda, which is item A, a 2022 City of Watertown Budget Hearing. For this, we will go to our city manager in her first-ever budget meeting for Watertown.
No pressure.
No pressure.
None, none at all.
Everything's going great, and let's see what you got.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for taking the time to be here. I did want to just make a couple of statements before we get rolling into the budget. First, I want to extend a sincere thank you to Kristin and her staff for all of the work that they've put in on preparing the budget. I know they spent some time on the weekends and evenings making consistent, constant changes so that we could present a relatively balanced budget to you all. So, we are very appreciative of your work. Also, a thank you to all the department heads for all the work that they've put in, not just in their proposed budgets, but in really taking a deep dive and making sure that what we present to you tonight is accurate and reflects the priorities and needs for the upcoming year. I would like to mention that Terry Kelly is not with us tonight, our Parks Director. The South Dakota Park and Rec Association is holding their annual meeting in Watertown, and he is being awarded the Meritorious Professional Award for his service in Park and Rec. And I'm a little sad that we can't be there to celebrate with him. I want to congratulate him on that. So, those are my opening comments. I guess I'd also like to share just sort of the goal for this evening. I want it to present the budget, the proposed budget, to you all. It's your budget. We've taken what we think are aligned with your priorities, what we can do from a budget perspective, and put it into what I think is a really comprehensive program for next year. I would ask that if you intend to make changes, if you want to direct us to make changes, that you do that in the form of a motion so that we can make sure that we get it right, so that when we present the budget ordinance on November 1st, that it's encompassing of our conversation tonight. The goal of the night is just that, is to have a conversation about what we're presenting to you. And we're here to take direction and make the changes as appropriate. A little bit about the process that we went through to get here. Excuse me. I also have a very bad cold, so I'm sorry for coughing all over the place. Departments submitted their budgets, gosh, several weeks ago now, to the finance office. We then went through a round of individual department meetings, went line by line through the requests. And then I spent some time just ruminating on the requests and met individually again with the departments to talk through potential cuts, potential priorities. Then we came together as a group a few weeks ago and reviewed sort of the preliminary budget. I had some discussions about the use of unrestricted cash to cover some of the shortfall that we were looking at. And what you have in front of you is a comprehensive budget that reflects all of our departments. It's a great team to work with, and we had to make some hard decisions for the coming year, but I feel good about that. We can move into the first slide here. So, here's how we put the budget together. The priorities that I used when crafting this. So, first was our people, addressing the wage compression that was created by the new salary matrix, which we've discussed with you, and completing successful union negotiations. So, what you see reflected in here is a 2.5% COLA increase across the board for employees as well as addressing compression. So, the way that we are addressing that with non-salaried employees is taking their years of service and dividing it by two and placing them on the next appropriate step to that. And for salaried employees, we're taking their years of service divided by two and capping that at step eight. The next priority, and I think this lends into everything else, is our organizational and structural strategic planning. So, we need to really spend some time over the next year identifying future needs, planning for them both as a community and as an organization. So, it's really twofold. What are we doing internally and what are we doing externally? You'll notice in here that there's increased expenditures for street maintenance and repairs. That was a priority that I think every one of you have commented on, and we've heard out in the community quite a bit. Looking at some additional employee development, so enhanced focus on training, professional and leadership development, and additionally, creating some efficiencies and improved processes to streamline the work. And then lastly, and this is very big, completing with excellence the projects that we currently have on the docket. So, the ice arena, the airport terminal, downtown park, city hall renovation, and the street maintenance facility. You will not see in the proposed budget for 2022 any large capital projects. Any questions? I don't know how you want to handle questions, Mayor.
I think as they come up, the chair will recognize, and once you recognize, you have the floor to direct questions to Amanda or Kristin. But I would ask not to interrupt them while they're speaking, because sometimes they'll answer a question before it actually comes up, and to avoid a conversational tone, like back and forth. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. So, the general fund. In the general fund, you'll see that 60% of general fund expenditures are related to our people. That's just the reality of being an employee-heavy operation. 35% are operating and 5% is capital outlay. Some significant changes in the general fund revenues. We're looking at $98,400 property tax increase, an $800,000 increase in sales and use tax, $30,000 increase in bank franchise fees, a decrease of $197,000 for the transfer from municipal utilities. We're going to transfer in just about $70,000 from solid waste, and we'll see a decrease of about $30,000 in ambulance charges.
Councilman Villahauer.
Thank you, Mayor. We are not including anything in the revenues at this point from the second round of the stimulus package dollars that we're getting, because we still don't know for sure what that can be spent on. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General fund personnel. We are recommending the addition of an HR generalist position. You can see the position cost that is all-inclusive of benefits and salary. It represents about a 5.5% increase over the 2021 budget. General fund operating budget. Some significant changes over '21. City manager consultant services increase, recommending $75,000, and that is to facilitate strategic and operational strategic planning. Councilman Danforth asked the question earlier if those were, you know, part A and part B. Are they facilitated by the same, you know, group? They're really two separate, in my mind, anyway. They're really two separate processes. So, strategic planning really is looking globally at the community. What do we need to be looking at over the next five, maybe 10 years from a capital building, big project perspective? And then the second piece of that is operational. When do we add people? Where do we add them? How do we account for that? When do we add technology? And there's some very good models out there that help us plan better. We had a lot of requests for people this year. They're all needed, but we can't meet all of those needs this year. And so, if we can really hone in on how we begin to meet those needs, some of that will be created through efficiencies, and some of it is literally adding bodies to our mix. Excuse me. But going through that planning process will not only help us identify that, everyone will know what the plan is this. We know that in year one, we're adding positions here. In year two, this department is adding. And it gives us a really great framework to work from. You'll see forestry consultant services increase, and this is to help get the forestry department caught up with their ever-growing tree list. Community development expert and consultant services increase. This is really related to recodification. So, looking at our ordinances as a whole, specifically our zoning ordinances, taking a deep dive, making sure they still make sense, and going through that process. Community development, computer renewal, maintenance increase. It's their time for new computers, and we'll transfer out about $400,000 to the park and rec department. Any questions on that? General fund capital outlay. We're looking at, and you'll actually see it's a decrease over 2021. We're looking at computers and software for about $350,000, and that's across the organization. The engineering department has requested a robotic total station. Police department is requesting three new patrol cars and some related equipment, fire department equipment. I would like to make note that some of the equipment that's requested from police and fire are contractually obligated through the union contracts, so vests, bunker gear, things like that. Street department equipment for $100,000, bat wing mower, snow removal dump truck for 145, cemetery, mower cab, mosquito sprayer, forestry dump truck, and library books and other reference materials for 75,000. The park and rec fund. You'll see that 65% of this budget is related to personnel, 6% is capital outlay, 29% is operating expenditures. Let's see. Significant changes over 2022 in the revenue. We're transferring in $400,000 from the general fund. We'll transfer in about $50,000 from the triple B fund. Golf fees and membership fees will increase by about $10,000. Golf cart rentals, we're anticipating a $25,000 increase, a decrease in zoo memberships by 10,000, gift shop sales increase by 15,000, and a zoo donation decrease of about 44,000. Park and rec personnel. We are reconciling-
Excuse me, city manager. Councilman Danforth has a question.
Amanda, can I need to hop back just a couple slides. I'm just trying to make sure that what's up here correlates to what's in the book. The, oh, where's the number at now?
Is this the right slide?
Maybe go back one or forward. I'm not sure which. Okay, I think that's the one. That's 70, the 75040. Isn't that reflected differently in the book? Isn't it 15,000 in the book?
Well, it's, though, there's two separate ones. So, the 75 is for the recodification process. The 15, and Matt can maybe explain it a little bit better, is to actually codify. So, right now, our code is a PDF document, and so it's to make it a more usable format. Is that correct?
City Attorney Matt Robey.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think this has been, for some that have been around a while, I think Stanton Fox had potentially discussed trying to do this at some point in the past, and maybe it just didn't make it into the budget. There's a couple firms, the two most prominent firms out there, one's called MuniCode and the other one's called American Legal Publishing. And if you go, for example, if you Google right now Brookings ordinances, Sioux Falls ordinances, Mitchell, Aberdeen, basically any city that, over 5,000 people in the state of South Dakota uses a third-party codification service, where it's hosted on an external website. They facilitate updates, so when we make an update, we would send them that document. They would facilitate putting it on the website for us, and they put it together in a nice, clean format. It's a lot more user-friendly. There's links. Now, we have this 550-page PDF document that Jana Mills slaved over and put together, and it is a very user-friendly document for what it is. But the third-party process is much, you know, it's much slicker and more user-friendly. I know that it's probably going to take some getting used to. I think a lot of people are pretty used to this, the PDF, doing control find and try to find something. But that's what that's for. That's what the intention of that is.
Follow-up, Councilman Danforth.
Yeah. So, is the 15 part of that 75? So, where does that-
No, it is not.
I'm missing where that 75 is at then.
The 75 is in the community development budget.
Oh, it is. Okay. Oh, let's see. And so, my next question is, does this become an annual cost that we'll see, or is this?
The 75 is not an annual cost. It's a one-time process cost.
But then we'll have a, some type of annual fee for them to host and maintain that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the 15, the 15 is an estimate. The last quote I got a couple of years ago was about 14. So, that's just for the initial legwork to get it all up and running. And then I think there's a couple of different plans you can choose from. Once we get proposals, we'll flesh that out a little more. There's a more do-it-yourself-type plan where you kind of go in and do your own publishing. They just host it. And then there's a full service where you just send it to them, and they do it yourself. And then they charge a per-time fee for that, so every time that happens, you may incur a $100 fee or something like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Villahauer.
Thank you, Mayor. As long as we backed up a couple of slides, I should ask a question when we were on that slide. On the general fund capital outlay, Amanda, you went through the things that we are proposing for 2022. I think it'd be, you know, helpful if we knew some of the larger items that were requested that we're not proposing for 2022. If you have the information handy or-
Sure. There were some large pieces of equipment from the street department. I think Heath can maybe describe more in detail. The police department actually requested four patrol cars and a boat. Let's see. Computers and software, we really pared that one down. We had looked at doing a document management software, which was about $50,000. But in addition to that, had looked at kind of outsourcing for the time being this very large scanning project, so taking all the documents that are in the basement and getting them scanned and getting them organized. That was about $250,000. Gosh, library requested, gosh, I think it was $106,000 for books, and we cut that back a little bit. I'm not sure if I'm missing any other big requests or not. The cemetery had a skidster.
Okay. Give me some, thank, gives you some idea. I'm guessing that in the cases where we did not grant a request, department has prioritized what they felt was most important in the-
Yeah, they did. When we did the initial, you know, look at the budget, you know, we needed to find about $3.2 million. And to all of their credit, they went back and sharpened their pencils and really honed in on what is critical for the next year, what would be very helpful, and what, you know, we could put off until a future year.
Thank you.
I lost my place. Okay. Park and rec personnel. Significant changes. We're recommending the addition of a park system maintenance worker, two, at a cost of $66,527. That's an increase of just a little over 9%. The park director had actually requested two park maintenance positions and a forestry tech. After a lot of discussions with Terry and going back and forth, we landed on requesting one with the thought that once we get caught up, so, you know, we've requested some dollars to do some outsourcing of tree trimming and removal, requested some dollars to deal with mowing, then we can really assess what the needs are. His request for two was really kind of a shot in the dark. We may need four, or we may not need to add anymore. But until we're caught up, we don't really know what the true needs are. And part of that operational strategic planning will help us really decide and define what our employee needs are, which is, so this is how we landed on one employee addition, starting in January for the park department. All right. Park and recreation operating. Some significant changes, and Kristin maybe-
Councilman Tupper, did you have a question?
Just a quick question. When you say get caught up, can you explain what you're?
So, the forestry tree list, I think they have about 85 trees on it right now, and it keeps growing. And we have four full-time forestry employees. I think it's four. And that's just, that's a lot. You can't ever get ahead with, when the list continues to grow.
Is that part of the, with the tree?
Yeah, so the 25,000 that we've requested for some outsourcing is to have them deal with the tree list.
With the disease, disease trees?
Some are diseased, some have been damaged, you know, things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Paulson had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this including the new ice arena? I mean, is it?
No. So, there's nothing in this budget that reflects the new ice facility. That will not be included until the 2023 budget. It will not be operational until summer of '23. In consultation with Dick about the budget, you know, he recommended that we didn't need to add personnel until '23.
Councilman Shetty had a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, the, on the forestry, you're not adding position specifically for forestry, just in the parks and rec in general, or?
Correct. Yeah, we're not recommending at this time an additional forestry position. We're recommending dollars to get the list dealt with and then reassess the position needs.
Another follow-up question. I just, I noticed in the proposal book, there was, there's always been- I just, I noticed in the, in the proposal book here, there was, there's always been a forestry technician one and technician two, and no, and it, it shows no supervisor in the book. And then now they're showing one supervisor and two technician ones, so that's adding a position, it looks like, that's what I'm just trying to clarify, on page sixty-nine.
Can you answer that? We'll get back to you on that, we're not quite sure.
Okay.
Why, why, the, my recommendation is not to add a position right now.
Okay, good, well, I thought, yeah, they're adding, you're adding a position, but you're.
Right.
Recommending right now not to add a position.
Right, I'm not.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
While you're looking at that, or you can come back to him, uh, councilman Beeler had a question.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'm gonna suggest, you know, as a liaison and, and working with the park and rec department, that we do give consideration to adding one more person, that would be a, um, probably a park slash forestry person, I think that's what they'd be looking for. Uh, in lieu of park conditions, additional facilities that we've, that we've put together, I think, uh, they're struggling. And when we talk about trees, you gotta remember we're planting two hundred and fifty to four hundred trees, you know, it can take a couple of days to take one big cottonwood tree down. Uh, these folks are struggling, I think, and, you know, Aberdeen has six forestry people, just forestry, and Brookings has eight in their forestry department. You know, we also have this, and I don't know how close it is, it's probably still a ways off, but we're trying to be proactive with this Emerald Ash Bor. And so I think it makes sense to me that we put a little bit more resource towards the, the park and rec department. I, I see those struggles, I visit with those folks, uh, at our meetings every month, and, um, I think it, it, according to them, it would take about ten years to get caught up, and about ten more years to maintain where we need to be, I think, uh. So there's a lot, a lot of parkland, eight hundred, or six hundred and eighty-six acres plus our softball complexes and some of the other facilities that we've got. So, um, I would, uh, I, I would ask that we add an additional person that could be a park slash forestry, um, person.
Councilman Paulson had the next question.
Thank you, mayor. I agree with Bruce a hundred percent, um, I do feel like, uh, giving them one extra to take care of, uh, I mean, uh, we had a lot of complaints about parks this year, and, um, I think that that plays into it. But I do think, being, trying to be proactive with this Emerald Ash Bor and try to get ahead of the game instead of be reactive. So I do agree with Bruce, and I, I don't know if now's the time to make a motion, but I would make a motion to add a position.
Possibly, uh, councilman Shuddy had a question, then I'll get back to you, um, for an actual, did you have an answer for us, Kristen? Our finance officer, Kristen Bobzine.
Thank you, mayor. So I will, I don't know if anybody remembers, but it was, I think, earlier in two thousand twenty-one, Terry had came to the council and asked when we had, um, our previous forester retired. And upon that, he did request that we, um, kind of change up the structure there in forestry. So they actually now do have three and a half full-time staff. So that change actually happened in twenty-one, so, sorry, that, I'm, yeah. So it's not actually a change to the budget in twenty-two, but now they do have three and a half positions within forestry, which is an addition.
And one is the supervisor position.
Councilman Shuddy, did you still have a question?
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Sorry.
And, uh, I, I just want to concur, I agree with, with Bruce and Colin on, on the forestry department to really do a, a deeper dive on that and consider what the best, what, what we can improve in that area as far as personnel.
Okay, um, in order to, in order to debate the motion, we first have to have a motion, so, uh, that said, you were going to make one. What specifically would you like to state?
To add a, I, I guess I was going, I, I'm gonna ask for staff, to how to word this, 'cause I don't want to.
Please do, I think the intent is to add another employee in the park and rec, but at what tier and what payment schedule?
Right, so what we would need to know is if you want a park system maintenance worker or a forestry tech, 'cause the, the, the cost is different, it's, it's not a lot, um, but in order to prepare the budget. Yeah, two separate funds.
Councilman Beeler.
I, I want to clarify too, I, what, I wasn't expecting somebody that was purely forestry. I think it's gonna have to be somebody that has a designation, designation that would be able to do that type of work. But this person would also be utilized as just a regu- as a park, uh, a park maintenance person as well. Now, to, to what percentage those would be, I don't know. I think they'd like to have that opportunity, have that flexibility to be able to do, to use those people in the best way possible for that time.
You bring up a really good point, councilman Beeler, and this is something that Kristen and Terry and I have discussed, is actually reclassifying all of the park employees so that they can be, uh, allowed to do the forestry work. It, it really comes down to a work comp thing, they have to be classified in a certain way in order to do that work. Um, but it still doesn't, you know, it's, it's not like you have eight full-time people doing forestry at that point then. But it allows Terry to direct his staff a little better if they, if they have the flexibility to do that, um, additional work.
Councilman Danforth.
Is it our intent tonight to leave here with a completely approved budget? Or are we going through the first read and thinking of things? Maybe there's some, some opportunity for change and then approve a budget at a later date, the next meeting? What, what is the plan for today? The reason, and the reason why I ask that is, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with what's being proposed, but I want to see that come back from Amanda and her staff as to exactly what that position should be, how we structure things. I don't think we should be the ones dictating what that position is. I would like thought put into that on a second, or a, an additional person brought back to us for consideration in a, where we would, uh, do a final vote on, on what I assume to be our budget.
Councilman Beeler.
Mike, just a response, uh, councilman Danforth, uh, I'm not, I, we need to know that, and, and I'm not sure, I don't remember exactly what the designation was. Terry can certainly provide us with that information, but I almost think it was a park system maintenance worker three, is maybe what I recall. Does that make sense, is there such a category?
Uh, there may be, I, I don't have the request sheet in front of me, but I think he requested, yeah, two, two worker two positions.
Yeah, we, we do need that information, I agree.
Councilman Paulson.
I guess my recommendation for now would probably to say a forestry, forestry technician, either one, two, for the additional position, and then the other one is a parks, and then reclassify as needed, or if we do the whole department as a reclassification. But it sounds like, from our comments, is we're leaning towards giving forestry the first, kind of like the first, for the added position, the one we're discussing right now.
Well, I, I, if I'm hearing correctly, what, what I think you're discussing is adding two positions.
Two total, yes.
Two total.
Yeah.
Um, we've recommended the park maintenance position, and the option is to add another maintenance position or add a forestry position.
Correct, and that's, I'm saying, my recommendation would be forestry at this moment.
Councilman Beeler?
On top of the other one.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, Colin, I'll just kind of, I, I've had discussions just recently with director Terry Kelly, and, uh, it, well, i- in his recommendation was somebody that could, would be a, um, a, a park position slash forester. That's what he's looking for, if we could add another person, and I, I absolutely think that's the direction we need to go.
Mayor.
City attorney Roby.
Chime in real quick, uh, to councilman Danforth's point, um, one way this could be accomplished is if the council tonight wants to chime in with recommendations, um, and then have the manager take that under advisement and bring back, at the time we approve the appropriation budget, the final budget, indicating to the council what's changed since the budget hearing, if anything, and the council will have a chance to vote up or down on the whole budget.
Yes, and I think that tonight is, we're bringing forward as close to a finished product as we can, but if the council deems that our policy priorities are, let's say, more in one area or less in another area, that's for our decision tonight, and then the staff will go back and make those reflections, um, in an, in a amended budget and bring it back to us.
We're, we're scheduled, you know, to do the first, the first reading of the ordinance on November first, we, sorry, lost my train of thought. Uh, we could do a work session prior, prior to the November first meeting to go over any changes that, that you all have, have asked us to, to present. Uh, and then it's a first reading, uh, we can continue to modify if, if necessary, but we do need to approve it, uh, by the end of November. So if, if substantial changes are gonna be made after the first reading, we'll probably have to have a special meeting.
We'll see how many proposed changes come forward tonight.
Um, so would you like us to prepare a budget that adds an additional forestry tech position?
I think that, okay, so, I, I don't think that this needs to be an official motion.
We, I just need to know that there's consensus, right?
That's what I was gonna say, is.
Well, it could go one of two ways, so, I mean, the way I interpret the, the city manager and the council's role is related to the budget, it's the city manager's proposed budget. And, and so if the council has ideas tonight for changes to make, city manager takes it under advisement, brings the budget back, either adding or not adding those changes, indicating to the council what's been added or not added. And then at that time, if the council wants to make a motion to amend the budget, then it would rise or fall on its own merits. And then it could be passed as amended or as presented. So I, I think that that could work, otherwise it could be done, it could be done in a work session too, there's probably a couple of different ways that it could be accomplished. But I think tonight, if the city manager would like kind of a general consensus, that, that would probably work too.
I would say it's more of a proposed direction, policy direction coming from the council directing staff as to what to do. Finance officer, Bobzine.
Thank you, mayor, um, yeah, and standard in the past has been that this budget hearing, which this is what it is, and now it's the manager's budget, is to essentially establish her budget and then let the council make their motions of changes, which then is on record of what the council suggested the changes, and yes, it's still a two-part reading. The only thing I want to clarify with the, what's kind of being asked is, it's a little bit difficult because forestry sits in the general fund and your park maintenance sits in the other fund, um, park and rec fund. It's currently, we have nothing, um, that has been graded or established that would be a two-position. So it, I think that's where Amanda's kind of leading, is, is, do we want the parks or do we want a forestry? Because we currently don't have a, a job description on the books that's a, a two-part position. So timing-wise, I mean, we could, we could make every effort we can to get a solid number, but it might not happen. For a dual. For a dual position, 'cause we just don't have that currently.
Councilman Beeler.
What, what I would suggest again is allow director Kelly to, to look into that and make a decision on what, I'm pretty sure he's gonna say forestry. That's where it would start, you know, and then that would, would still allow that person to be able to work in the park side of it.
Councilman Danforth.
Bruce just said what I, just said what I was gonna say, is that, I don't wanna, I don't think we should be dictating what that position is based, we don't know what that is. We need to have you recommend, I think the council's saying, we're willing to consider an additional staff as was apparently proposed to you, Amanda, correct, originally? And so what would that look like, what would the position be, what would the cost be, where would that be, where would that alignment be? Um, that's what I would hope to see come back. Can I ask, I, I would like to ask a question if I may, mayor, is, is what was your, when, when you introduced that and said that you, you went with the one, and then you said you wanted to take a look at what the structure needs were, I believe, or something like that? Can you elaborate on that, what were your thoughts, eh, eh, on not having that second position, looking at the structure? What, what were your thoughts in that, that prevented you from including?
So, I, I had a lot of thoughts, uh, and, and Terry and I spent a lot of time, uh, talking through this. Uh, one was overall budget, uh, so there's a lot of needs across, across the organization, and so trying to, uh, meet as many of those as we could. Secondly, um, through, in the budget, there's a total of fifty thousand dollars, um, mowing and, and forestry that we're recommending for outsourcing. So taking some of that work off of our parks department, our park department's plate. I really think, and, and there's, there's some big conversations that we have to have over the next year about some of our operations. And I think we really need to look at the structure of our parks department, and this is, I, this is not new information, um, to Terry, so, he, he knows I'm, I'm going to say this, but before we just start adding people, we have to make sure that we know the work that they're going to be done, and I don't disagree with councilman Beeler's comments. I mean, our, we have a massive park system, and it's, it's wonderful, and eh, we gotta be able to keep up on it. Um, but just throwing people, uh, at the problem isn't always the solution. And so really looking at our processes, looking at our structure, looking where we can gain efficiencies, maybe we don't do the mowing at all. Eh, you know, maybe, maybe that's something that is continually outsourced, maybe, uh, forestry, you know, we, we continue to partner, uh, with, with the private sector on that. I don't have those answers right now, but I think they're worth exploring, and, uh, that's, that's what lent, lent me to, um, make the recommendation that I did.
Councilman Danforth.
Amanda, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm, I'm with you from the standpoint of a structure review and throwing people at things, that's not how I would normally do things. And, and in our, my position here right now, I don't know what the need is. And to say it's in forestry, it may, that may or may not be right, it, maybe adding a person doesn't help, you know, it, sometimes that's true. And I'm, I'm at the, I'm at the point where I would suggest that we let Amanda do her structural review, and as we look at outsourcing some of this stuff to see where the chips fall. And we have, we have during the course of a year at times, added people and, eh, when it was truly deemed that we needed it, and it wasn't budgeted for. And I think we need to allow Amanda to, to, to do her deal. She's the one that ultimately is gonna have to answer to the, the maintenance and care of our, our, both of those areas, our parks and such. And I think we need to give her time to understand and, and work through the structure and structural needs, and also assessing what's best in, in outsourcing. So with that, my thought is, I think we need to go with what's recommended, let her do her thing, and if we get into two thousand twenty-two and we just find that she's going, I absolutely do need this, then we look at it as a, as another position. That's just my recommendation.
Councilman Villauer.
I, I agree with that, Bill, and I'd argue with what you guys say the need is over there, but Amanda, Amanda and I have had a conversation too about taking a deeper dive into our park and rec department, 'cause that is a multifaceted area that just to, to get our arms around what we do need to be doing there operationally-wise. And I, I'm not in a position to say this is what we need to do as far as adding, uh, one or two people. I think too, we need to take a look at the bigger picture relative to our park and rec department, see what our needs are and how we revamp and, and move forward, and if it means we have to revise something at a later point for two thousand twenty-two, uh, so be it at that point. But I, I would, again, uh, concur with what councilman Danforth is saying in that regard.
Councilman Beeler.
Uh, thank you, mayor. You know, like, like I say, I've been pretty intimately involved with the park and rec department for a couple of years, and I, I see the day-to-day struggles. I, I go to all the meetings, and, and, you know, pretty much all the meetings. I, and I, eh, I've been, been in the business world most of my life, and I do understand you have to take a lot of care in hiring, you know, when you're putting new people on. But if I've ever seen a need, I can see it there, I know we're, we're anticipating to outsource some of our mowing, some of the tree trimming. You know, I don't think we're gonna do a lot of tree cutting, that's not the plan, I don't believe, for, uh, outsource. It'd be more for trimming boulevard trees, that kind of thing. But, um, uh, you know, from a safety standpoint, getting rid of some of these nuisance trees, some of the, the older trees, you know, maintaining a nice canopy in the community, we continue to add. I, you can't dispute the fact that we've continued to add space and facilities, and these folks are, are in need, and I, and I, I, we've done this before where we just kick the can down the road and we say, yeah, let's check it out later. May, and, and then eventually maybe we'll forget about it, I think it's important, I think it, I think it is a need. Uh, I, I do think it needs to be taken care of sooner than later.
Councilman Paulson.
Thank you, mayor. I don't want to get too into, um, talking to employees, 'cause that's not how this happens. I happen to live right across the street from our. because that's not how this happens. I happen to live right across the street from our forestry supervisor. And I do see him come home that, at nine, 10 o'clock at night. And I'm not saying he's working all the time, but those conversations have, you know, oh, what are you up to tonight? And sometimes he's saying he's mowing until it's dark out. And, I mean, that's our supervisor doing that. And I, I totally respect him for that, but I, I just see the need just by having those quick conversations, because we try not to talk about work. That's just, it's never fun to talk about work at night. But, um, that has been brought up, and I, I guess, I just see it from that where he's coming home in work clothes, saying either he was at the ice arena or he was mowing. And, and that's why I said what I said, you know, I, I, but I agree 100% too with Glenn and, and Mike, where they're coming from too, is to figure out where the need is before we go. But I'm just reporting what I see too.
Councilman Shetty, did you have something to say?
Yeah, you had a good, good point, Councilman Danforth and Billhauer. Like I said earlier, making a deep dive, absolutely. Um, that said, it would just appear, again, but, you know, um, Councilman Beeler's been on it longer. It would appear that even adding one position, when we do a deeper dive and review it, it's probably gonna require more than one person to be added or, or farming it out to other, other entities. But, um, yeah, the need is there. So just, yeah, just, I suppose it's a, it's a timing thing. How do we work through it? So, yep.
I, I, I would also like to point out that, um, it, it's been requested in the temporary salaries line item, about $100,000 increase. Um, and will be look at operations. You know, the, the parks department actually left a lot of, is leaving a lot of dollars on the table this year in temporary salaries. Um, some of that's workforce, being able to find people. Um, but some of that could have been shifted maybe to, to outsourcing some of the work. So again, looking at the efficiencies to see what the need really is. I'm not disagreeing that, that this is, uh, not a need. I had 11 requests for new employees. And if I thought you all would have approved them, I would have have submitted for every one of them. Um, because we, you know, have not done substantial increases to our staff, uh, over the last 10 years. We've added positions here or there. Uh, and I'm happy to add this into the budget if that's your desire.
Councilman Tupper.
Do we have any idea what the $50,000 is budgeted for outsourcing is gonna do as far as man-hours and, and?
I do not have a clear answer on that yet.
I mean, that could be a big deciding factor in whether or not we add one more person. Is that gonna take care of one and a half people or?
Right. Uh, you know, some of that'll be flushed out through the, excuse me, through the RFP process.
Councilman Beeler.
Uh, just make a comment. We, thank you, Mayor. We're, we're, um, we're hoping, we're, we're hoping there are people available that will outsource some of this work. We don't know that. And I do believe that the request for, uh, outsourcing for mowing was 50,000, and I think we landed at 25. And the same thing was for forestry. The request from the park and rec department was 50, and we ended up at 25,000 there as well. And, um, I, frankly, I, I gotta say, I, I'm, I would prefer we add that, add additional monies to that.
What was presented to me was $50,000 total.
Well, that, that's not what Director Kelly told me.
So that's how we split it, split it evenly.
Okay, because he said that it was, he would, he would prefer to see 50,000 on both ends.
Oh, that's not the conversation I had with him, so.
Then we're hearing something different, but that's, just, just so we're clear. And we don't know, we don't know if we are gonna find people and what volume of work they can do as an outsource, uh, group, so.
Okay, um, thanks. Uh, we're gonna find some consensus here to give to the staff, uh, moving forward on this issue. Uh, just real quick, I choose not to say anything until after all the council has a chance to say something. I don't think that there is a wrong decision here necessarily. If we hire someone, they will definitely be used and probably used for a long time. It would be a good benefit to Watertown. But also, so I'm not against adding staff. Personally, I'm more in favor of doing a strategic review of the entire park and rec as to what we can do and how we're going to move forward with all of what park and rec does. So in lieu of that, I will be, I will be more in favor of not adding a position at this time. But there was roughly a motion that was made, and I think we could see if there's consensus to bring forward a proposed amendment to see what the budget would look like, adding a staff person after talking with Director Kelly, finding out if it's gonna be forestry or park tech, and seeing what that does to the budget. I think that would be an appropriate amendment for us to discuss at the first hearing. City Attorney Roby, would that be appropriate in your, I mean, if we give them the direction to draft an amendment to see what that would do to the budget? Or is that something we do at the first reading?
Again, I mean, I think in the past, the, the council would just make a motion to approve or deny something tonight.
Okay.
But in, also in the past, we never approved a, the council never approved a budget. They always just approved the appropriations ordinance, and we need to, the council actually needs to approve the whole budget as well as the appropriations ordinance. So there's actually another action that'll need to be taken this year. Either way is probably fine. I, I think that if you wanna treat it as, tonight you make the motion, and if it's approved and it gets added in, or not, either way is probably fine.
Personally, I would rather not make a structural change to the budget. As far as like making an official amendment of adding a staff person right now, I would rather see it be a proposal that we can have more time to discuss at the next hearing before an actual change is fully reflected. That's what I would prefer. Uh, City Manager Mack, what would your opinion be on that? What is?
I serve at the pleasure. So, um, however you'd like to proceed, I think is fine. If, if, if the intent is that you want, you want some time to think on this, I think we should have a work session, whether that's immediately prior to the November 1st meeting or we schedule something in the next couple of weeks where we can take everything we've heard tonight and, uh, add it into what's been proposed, and then you can vet that out. I think, I think that's appropriate. But once we present the ordinance, um, it gets a little, from a timing perspective, gets a little tricky to make amendments once, once we've done the first reading.
Okay. Um, I'll go to Councilman Tupper, but in lieu of that then, I am not in favor of having automatically adding a work session unless we know that it's going to be worthwhile. So we'll see how many other proposed changes we have. With that said, I would treat this then as an official amendment. Councilman Tupper?
Well, my only question is, without, uh, Director Kelly here tonight, we can sit and go back and forth all night long on this subject. I think it would be proper to have Director Kelly here to kind of answer a lot of these questions. So, uh, at this point, I'm, I agree to disagree with just about everybody here, I guess. Depends on how you look at it, so, but, but without Director Kelly here, I think it's a mute fact, so.
It does put us in a interesting position not having the director here. But with that said, giving staff directive going forward, City Manager Mack?
What questions would you like Director Kelly to answer?
We don't know if it's a park position, a forestry position, where he really needs the help.
Okay, so you want, you want me to flush out what she would prefer? Oh, I think he'd prefer all three.
Yeah.
So.
Councilman Beeler?
Okay.
No, I, the, I visited with him just this afternoon, actually, and it was a forestry slash, uh, park technician. So that's, that's what he's requesting.
Do we, do we technically even have that? We don't have that. So it would have to be?
Okay, let me rephrase that.
It would be a forestry.
It'd be forestry, but he could utilize that person when needed, other duties which could include park maintenance. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Paulson, would you be acceptable to making your proposal that you are proposing to add a forestry position to the park and rec budget?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That I will treat as an official motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Beeler. Um, I know that we've already discussed this. Any last hurrah before we vote, Councilman Paulson, or anyone on either side? Okay. So the vote is to add a forestry position to the park and rec budget. Council, uh, Finance Officer Bob Zine, would you call the role? I don't believe this is gonna be unanimous.
Okay, here we go. Beeler. Danforth.
No.
Holene.
No.
Paulson.
Yeah.
Shetty.
Yes.
Tupper.
No.
Billhauer.
No.
And then that fails.
Motion fails, but thank you, council, for a spirited discussion on that. Councilman Danforth?
I do, I do wanna, I do wanna say that with a strategic review of the park and rec department, this may get added back in or more gets added back in. It, it isn't that, I didn't vote no because I don't think there's a need, but, but, no, I didn't say that right, because there's not a need. I just believe in what process I heard that Amanda wants to take us in the review of structure and, and looking at the park and rec in a, in a whole manner and strategically. Uh, that's what I believe in, and I wanna support her on that. That's why I voted no. Not because I didn't agree that we needed most likely the position.
I think all of us on council have good reasons for and against this, and I don't think that there's any hurt feelings. Personally, I think it's easier, as you said, Councilman Danforth, we can add a position during next year if one is absolutely needed. It's easier to need someone and hire them than to hire someone now and then don't have a position for them going forward after a strategic review. So, thank you very much. Moving on.
I lost my place.
That is understandable.
That was, that was tough. Um, all right, park and recreation operating, so some significant changes. Uh, and Kristen can maybe give a little more detail on these. So banking services increases 8400. Golf course expert and consultant service increase. I do believe this is related to our contract with the Golf Pro. Golf course rent, so machinery, machinery and equipment, 15,000. Uh, and park system consultant services, 25,000. That would be the mowing, uh, that we talked about. So an overall increase over last year of almost 11%. Park and recreation capital outlay, um, some proposed purchases, uh, disc golf, 7,500. Golf course mower, 72,000. Uh, digital signage for the aquatic center, 14,000. Uh, replacing and repairing the deck area at the aquatic center, furniture and tubes for 10,000. Zoo animals, 3,000. Uh, park system, air compressors, mowers and pickups, uh, for 176,000. Questions about all of that? Okay. Bedboard and booze, fun stuff. Uh, so some significant changes from, uh, '21 to '22 in revenues. We're looking at about a $60,000 increase. And I guess I wanna touch on that a little bit. We, we are proposing a, a relatively, um, conservative increase in, in revenues for '22. I think we used 3%. Um, our actual numbers, um, for '21 are, are far exceeding that. Uh, but we wanna, you know, really try to be responsible with that. Um, expenditures, we're gonna decrease 57,500 in equipment maintenance. Uh, this 55,000 dollar increase to the CVB, uh, actually occurred in '21. Um, so the contribution to them is not going up in '22. It's just reflecting, uh, what the current contribution is, which is 350,000. Uh, and we're transferring out to park and rec an increase of $50,000. Prairie Lakes Wellness Center Fund, 61% of that fund is related to personnel. 36% is operating and 3% is capital outlay. Changes, uh, we're expecting about $110,000 in membership fees, an $18,000 decrease in rentals at the pool, and about a $10,000 increase at the aquatic center swim class.
City Manager Mack, um, just a quick question for you on membership fees increase. Is that the, is the membership cost increasing or are you projecting more people becoming members?
Increasing. The, the cost will be increasing.
Okay. Councilman Paulson has a question about that.
I didn't switch fast enough.
Can I just ask how much that's increasing and how are we justifying it?
That's a decision by the park board, and I, I have not, I don't know. I haven't seen, seen those numbers other than, uh, to show the difference.
Councilman Beeler, do you have any insight on that? Councilman Danforth?
Amanda and Kristen, we kinda had a little discussion on that today when we met regarding the budget. I think before that gets included, I, I think it needs to be seriously considered as to, um, if it's necessary. You know, 2020, we know was a bad year. Prior to 2020, that facility had a pretty significant operating profit. And this year, we saw an operating profit of about 20,000 is what we expect, I believe, correct? And we are halfway to our goal on the, uh, reserve that we, we wanted to create at the outset of that facility, so that the building or the, the operation can be self-sustaining for the replacement of equipment, not, not major capital. So I would question the logic of a, an increase at this point. I, I think that needs to be scrutinized. Uh, I'd like to understand, and I think that's where, uh, Councilman Paulson was coming from, is we wanna, in that particular case, I'd like to understand the logic behind it when it's already profitable in, in what would still be, I think, a tough year for 2021. You know, I don't think we're back to normal for a whole year. So I think under current, uh, unless our membership numbers are decreasing, right?
I, I think we are seeing a decrease in memberships.
So with that, I, you know, again, I'd like to understand the logic of it, because we're gonna have to answer to that. So I, before that gets anchored in there, I think that needs to be scrutinized personally.
I, um, don't see any other councilmen raising their hand, so I would like to say I agree with Councilman Danforth. This is a public facility for the quality of life, and therefore the public should be the priority, not the profit. So I would want to question why we're raising membership dues if we're already going to be operating at a profit. Finance Officer Bob Zine?
Thank you, Mayor. I will just let the council know that, um, part of the annual fee resolution, we have started to include the park and rec, um, fees. That includes the wellness center. So you guys will have a chance to, to see that kind of essentially before. So, and that usually comes forward in December. So if there are any changes at that time, um, you would see those fee resolutions at, in December.
How would that affect the budget?
Um, the one nice thing with the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center is it is a standalone fund. Um, so essentially if, if the revenue side is something that the council would not agree with, um, the nice thing is, is they do have a, a fund balance. Um, there again, we do always project our revenues to kind of be, we're very conservative with our revenue side of things. So, um, they would be fine. It wouldn't affect anything but their, their bottom line, essentially.
I want to apologize. I broke my own rule of being conversational there.
Oh.
With that said, uh, Finance Officer Bob Zine, so at least when it comes to this fund, we do have the flexibility of waiting to find out and, and ask about that membership fee.
We do.
Okay. With that, I would be, I would be open to going forward with the budget. All right, thank you. City Manager Mack, back to you.
Okay, personnel. Uh, no real significant changes. Um, you'll see that in 2021, facility operations moved to this fund, which is why you see the, uh, increase of 9%. Operating, insurance premiums are increasing, equipment maintenance increased about 15,000. Building maintenance increased at 14,750, and subscriptions increased 7,700. Proposed purchases, 43,5, um, for exercise equipment. Casualty reserve fund. Here's something very exciting.
Okay, excuse me.
Councilman Beeler has a question.
Can we address, uh, specific line items at this time with questions?
You bet.
You know, just a couple, um, that insurance.
Can you tell us what page you're on?
Yeah, I can. It's 120 on Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, uh, current expenditures. One is the insurance premiums went up almost 31%. Is that, what's the reasoning for that? Is that shifting employees or what? Out of curiosity.
Councilman Beeler, um, that is actually in 20, it was actually just this year. Sorry. 2020 and 2021 seem very similar. But '21, we actually did have South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance came back through. They did their, I think they do it every three to five years where they come back through all of our facilities, and they reevaluate them based off of their. and they reevaluate them based off of, there again, their age, what the materials are made up of. So this is kind of, um, basing the increase off of what we're going to see in twenty-one. So as we know what it's going to be in twenty-twenty-one, it's going to increase there again. And we had about, I think it was, I think it was six or eight percent is what we anticipated. But with the reevaluation of the property, we saw a shift. I think the fire department building actually saw quite a significant increase as well, too. And so that's just after they evaluate the year and stuff like that. So.
One other quick question would be subscriptions. What do we, we've got, I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's twelve thousand dollars that we budgeted for. Can I, is that IT stuff or?
So part of the subscriptions, I, I believe, um, Terry can come back and correct me if I'm wrong. But I think that's part of our, with all of our fitness classes, that subscription is, is keeping those, uh, kind of, our trainers, the subscriptions, so that they can do the, as you can tell, I do a lot of fitness, so.
Right.
So like the Zumba and stuff.
I do a lot of hot yoga.
See, yeah. So those are those types of subscriptions. Yep.
Thank you. City Manager Mac?
Okay. Now, again, to the really fun fund. No increase in projected expenditures for twenty-twenty-two. Capital Improvement Fund, uh, sixty-one percent is capital outlay, thirty-seven is debt service, and two percent are other expenditures. Um, so significant changes, about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in sales use and tax, and a fifty thousand dollar increase in state STP funds. Kristen, do you want to, there's a really big blue bar here. Um, maybe explain that a little bit.
Okay, so part of the reason why that looks so amazing, um, it was, that's just deals with our sales tax revenue bonds. So that's why sometimes the revenue gets thrown off on, on that side of things. So it's nothing, nothing to be alarmed by. We didn't make a lot of extra sales tax money. So that's just, uh, with the bonding.
All right, Capital Improvement Fund expenditures. So some proposed purchases, and we'll dive into these a little deeper. Uh, street system improvements, five million, seven hundred forty-four thousand. Storm sewer and flood control projects, three hundred and fifty thousand. Rec facility improvements, one point five million. Industrial Park and others, seven point eight million. Debt service, four point six, and transfers out, three hundred thousand. So it's a, a three point six percent increase over twenty-twenty-one. And we'll dive in, into these. Uh, so street improvements, melon overlay, uh, we're proposing to increase that budget by one million fifty dollars. Third Avenue Northwest Street Project increase, five hundred thousand dollars. Neighborhoods, street improvements, uh, one million fifty dollars. And parking lot rehabilitation, oh, fifty thousand. Sorry, I read that wrong. Uh, parking lot rehabilitation increase of seventy-five thousand. So it's an increase of three point six percent. The anomaly here is that in twenty-twenty-one, the Tenth Avenue Project was budgeted for. Then the council, uh, issued bonds for it. So what we've done is we've taken the budgeted amount for Tenth Avenue and placed it in the twenty-twenty-two budget, uh, because bonds covered the Tenth Avenue Project. So we're really looking at a two point six million dollar increase in dollars for street improvements in the twenty-twenty-two budget. So the percentage increase looks really small, but that's because we shifted some, that includes the Tenth Avenue Project. Questions?
Councilman Paulson?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, um, can you guys just expand a little bit maybe on what the plan is for that money? Like what, not, I don't want to get too deep into it because I know that that's not, but, I mean, if we're increasing it that much, we have to have, uh, at least a semi-plan behind that of where.
I'd like to turn that question over to our Public Works Director. I think he's prepared.
Public Works Director Heath Funnai.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager Mac. Uh, to your question, Councilman Paulson, I just happen to have a map here that I'll pull up, I'll share on Teams, uh, that generally shows the location of, uh, much of the proposed work for twenty-twenty-two. This is a real rough draft of a map, and as was indicated with those numbers, we're proposing, I think it was another million dollars more on the melon overlay. Typically, we've been running about a million dollars on our melon overlay efforts. You see this hashed red line are the areas that we'd be looking at doing melon overlay. These are some known streets that, uh, rank very low on our pavement management system that we have in place. And, uh, we'd be looking to melon overlay, generally speaking, uh, those locations in the hashed red area. Um, I can zoom on, in on this a little bit. I'd lose some clarity if I zoom in too far. Uh, the solid red, or what we call our neighborhood reconstructs, where it's, the road is in worse shape than, uh, a melon overlay will correct. So we need to fully reconstruct the street. Uh, one of them that's been pending for a while now is, uh, I believe this is Twelfth Avenue. It's up in the Conrad East Subdivision. And we had initiated that project, um, uh, I think it was two years ago. So most of the design work is done for this, and it's kind of locked and loaded and ready to go next year for the most part. Uh, but there'd be a full reconstruct there. We're, we're proposing. A Third Avenue, I'll zoom in a little bit more here. Third Avenue, of course, with the bridge reconstruct that's slated for next year. Uh, we'd also be reconstructing Third Avenue from, uh, Compesca Boulevard east to, um, Third Street West. And so that's all part of this, uh, this CIP, uh, along with other, uh, roads throughout the community. Um, it would be under those neighborhood reconstruct projects. Uh, of course, we've also got some alley improvements indicated on this map. We've got the, uh, downtown park area that's going next to the Ruins Development. Uh, that, that alley needs reconstructed and has been put on hold, uh, at least this last construction season, just because of the known improvements that'll be going in. So we've slated to help, uh, pay for the costs of reconstructing that alley, along with the other alley. One of the gravel alleys in the downtown area that we committed to, the prior council committed to, uh, paving, uh, as soon as we could get it into the cycle. So both of those alleys are slated for next year. And in the green areas, we've also got some public parking lot facilities that needed some maintenance. Fire stations one and two need some, uh, parking lot maintenance done on those, so we incorporate those into our engineering projects, which makes good sense. It streamlines the process. It saves the fire department from having to deal with asphalt contractors and such. So they get lumped into our CIP plan that the engineering office helps manage, along with, uh, the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center, where we also have some parking lot maintenance needs going on up there. Um, anything else notable here to highlight? I think that was, those were the highlights I really wanted to mention and point out here briefly tonight. If you have any further questions, we could help answer them.
Councilman Paulson?
Thank you. Uh, Director Funnai, uh, can you just talk about, um, the reconstruction of Highway two twelve just a little bit? And maybe what our costs are with that and how that's going to impact us a little bit, just because we're talking about CIP right now?
Yes, so Phase Two of two twelve will be occurring next year. Um, council may recall, some of you may recall, we've committed to a financial amount, and I don't remember what that is off the top of my head, uh, if you do, Kristen. But portions of this are the city's responsibility with realignment of, uh, I think it's Fourteenth Street, uh, the, the traffic signal relocation from Thirteenth to Fourteenth. Um, the city has some participation in that. We also committed to some funds that were actually spent this year in Phase One of Phase Two of the DOT's job, where they did some pretty extensive storm sewer work, and we participated, uh, a little bit of a cost share in that as well. Because what they built this year helps drain our city streets through their state highway system. Um, but nonetheless, those, those funds have been committed through an agreement with the DOT. Uh, they're earmarked in the budgets to be accounted for when we, when it comes time to pay our cost share.
Councilman Vilhauer?
I've got a question in general, Heath. Uh, I, I am pleased to see that we're increasing, uh, the budget as far as, uh, proposed work to be done. But I've also been hearing the last couple of years, in fact, that, uh, will, will the contractors, supplies, et cetera, be out there even though they're budgeting dollars? Will we be able to get the work done?
Yeah, great question, Councilman Vilhauer. Uh, Mayor, if I may, uh, the, the scope of work, um, for projects like this, we feel fairly confident that, uh, um, labor and materials will be readily available for these kind of projects. Typically, where we run into a little bit of a bottleneck is the smaller scale stuff, like when the streets crews are trying to perform our own internal patching. Our, our local asphalt supplier, simply due to economic business model of theirs, can't open up any given day for us just for a few tons of asphalt for us to go patch some potholes. But when it comes to the economy of scale and you, and you gain that economy of scale, and you've got two million dollars instead of one million dollars of melon overlay, I don't doubt one bit that they'll, they'll bid that, along with other competitors in the region, and we'll have materials and manpower available to construct these projects.
Thank you. Councilman Paulson?
Thank you. I don't want to take away from what was just said, but I do want to touch on that a little bit. I, uh, we just went to the Municipal League, uh, Conference, um, this past week. And I did ask that question to some of the engineers that were there, um, and being on the construction side. I know where we sit on the schedule side, but I was seeing how they're going to bid projects going into next year. And, um, a lot of the projects are actually getting extended, uh, for multiple year, uh, completion dates, is what I've been told. And I don't know if we plan on doing that at all, but, um, uh, especially with the new infrastructure package, uh, that's expected to hit at some point, um, we're already booked on the construction side, uh, for one to two years. So that's kind of why I was talking to the engineers about it. And so they are looking at pushing some, pushing the completion dates out a year past where they probably would have, just to allow for supply issues and/or labor issues that we have seen in the past. So that's, that was directly from engineers that I've talked to, but, um, obviously cities can adjust their schedules, too.
Thank you. Moving on.
Mitch is working his magic. Okay. Any other questions, uh, about this, this proposal? Okay. Capital Improvement Fund, uh, Rec Facility Improvements, so, um, an additional fifteen thousand for Boulevard Trees and Removal, ten thousand for Cook Complex for improvements, um, two hundred and sixteen thousand for Pre Campground Improvements, hundred and sixty for Park and Playground Improvements, two hundred and fifty thousand for the Bike Trail Expansion, a hundred and eighty-five thousand to replace some basketball courts, a hundred and fifty thousand for Golf Course Projects, two hundred thousand Aquatic Center Improvements, fifty thousand for the Parks Master Plan, a hundred thousand for an Ice Resurfacer, and two hundred thousand for Ice Arena Improvements. I believe that that two hundred thousand is really to, um, start putting our current ice arena in a position to be utilized as a field house once the new ice arena is built. So a decrease in costs of about one point four million over twenty-twenty-one.
Councilman Tupper has a question.
You got money in there for Bike Trail Expansion, but I don't see anything in there for Bike Trail Maintenance. Nothing in the budget for that?
It's a different budget.
Different, okay.
That's what Kristen's telling me.
Okay, I can live with that, so.
Okay.
Councilman Danforth?
Excuse me. The Ice Arena Improvements, uh, in my opinion, shouldn't come with a complete plan. If, if that's part of going with a, a restructuring of that or, or revamping that facility to become a, a, uh, field house per se, number one, we need to agree to that, that that's what it's going to be. And then that we should see a plan that incorporates what it takes to get it to what we want it to be. I, I don't like the idea of randomly throwing a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's something that, I don't know what it's going to be when the dust settles, that we're going to have. Uh, in my opinion, we need a plan on, on what it's going to be. Then we can look at if we allocate funds for two thousand two, uh, twenty-two or not.
I would, I would agree with your comments, Councilman Danforth. Uh, the one thing to remember, though, is, um, the allocation of dollars doesn't mean the expenditure of dollars. It just gives us the authority if we, if we do come with a, an appropriate plan to actually spend the dollars. Um, but I think you're exactly right, and we need to make sure we, we're very comprehensive on what we're doing with that facility. I've not been in, involved in, uh, these preliminary conversations on what, uh, what that, what that would look like. Um, I, I think Terry's had some initial conversations with the staff and probably the Park Board, but nothing's been presented formally.
Thank you. I would concur with Councilman Danforth's point. I would also, um, comment a little bit on something Councilman Tupper said. I hear from the public quite often, it doesn't do us any good to expand our bike trails when we can't maintain the ones that we have currently. So I want to make sure that that's a priority. Thank you. Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. To that point, um, I think we have had discussions of kind of bringing the band back together. And that's, uh, some, the group that we've had in the past, something similar to that, that we could reevaluate our trail system. Because maintenance is a huge issue for that, and it's something that we need to probably do sooner than later, you know, especially before we expand that.
Who's the band?
The trail system.
Well, we know Councilman Beeler will be the lead singer. We know that. I used to play harmonica.
Happy Trails, I know that one. So, but no, I, that I think is real important to, to decide what direction we're going to go with this. But I, I would have to agree, maintenance is very important, uh, you know, compared to adding additional miles to the trail system.
Right. And that all does get incorporated into the Master Parks Plan. Um, so, uh, at least the, the few that I've been a part of in my career, um, they really do try to incorporate, all right, not only do you need new here, but here's how you should, you should fund it going forward, or here's how you should maintain it and plan, and plan for those things. Um, so I, I don't disagree.
I believe, I know that we have had discussion about having the bike plan, master plan, reevaluated with the Park and Rec reevaluation. I would be wholeheartedly in favor of that. Thank you. Councilman Beeler?
Sorry, uh, just one thing, too. Do, do we, would we have to budget some dollars if we wanted to, um, uh, ask the first district to help us? They did that before. We employed their services. Yeah, and I think that would make sense.
I think that'd be part of our agreement with them, part of our fees already.
All right. Thanks.
I don't know. She's giving me a look. Maybe I'm wrong on that.
Can I?
Go ahead.
So just to add a little bit, too. So currently, the budget does show, is it two hundred and fifty thousand? The other thing that I do want to point out is we are still carrying over, I believe, around seven hundred thousand. So this puts that two hundred and fifty thousand that we keep doing, I don't know if the council remembers, um, and some of you are also new to the council. But what we found was that to do just like a hundred thousand dollar stretch wasn't going to get us very much. So what we started to do is we put in two hundred and fifty thousand in, and then we continued to carry it over. If you look in the budget book on page one twenty-seven, and in twenty-twenty, we actually spent around five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on the, on the trail. So the two hundred and fifty thousand doesn't necessarily mean that we'll do two hundred and fifty thousand of work, but what we'll do is we'll continue to form that plan and to, to do the work, whether it's five hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, whatever we can kind of have with engineering to get done. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that? Public Works Director Funnai.
Sorry, I'm catching this conversation late, but from the little bit I picked up on here, I would like to point out, our new transportation master plan update that we just completed does also have included in it some pedestrian connectivity, uh, pathway recommendations as well. It's not quite in the level of details a full, comprehensive bike path study would be, a recreation trail study would be. But it does give us some good guidance and direction as well for, uh, a tool to continue to use here in the near future.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Industrial Park and Other Infrastructure, proposed purchases, excuse me, uh, improvements to buildings, a hundred and fifty thousand. GIS implementation and mapping, fifty-seven thousand four hundred. The E-nine-one-one fund, uh, you'll see that a large majority of this is related to personnel, eighty-five percent. One percent is capital and, uh, four-two percent is operating expenditures. No significant changes in revenue.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I ask this question every year, but I'll ask it again. Do, do we get the full hundred percent of, from the counties that are collected, uh, for, on the telephone bills?
I just learned this today, that we do.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Cause I know there for a few years we were getting what, 90, 95% or whatever. I see heads nodding back there, so, okay. So we're getting 100%. Okay, good, thank you.
Councilman Beeler?
I'll probably ask it again next year.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, no, I, the GIS, uh, is that a flyover? Is that, are we remapping or is this an annual fee that we continue to pay for GIS, uh, applications?
My, my understanding of that, and Spencer may know better than I do, but PD has their own, uh, mapping system of sorts that relates to how they, uh, E911 responds to calls. Spencer did more detail on that than? Is that accurate? Chief Toomey, sorry, chief is in the room here too. But it, it's separate from our GIS mapping and our aerial photography. I do know that. That's the part I was going to point out.
Keith, I'm wondering if this isn't, don't we split the flyover into years? Is that not this? I don't, I don't thi- I don't think this has anything to do with the 911, we're not, because it's a slide back, right? So this is capital improvement. I think this is the flyover and we cut that into, we do it every three years, right? So I think this is just the flyover cut into three years, so this is our portion for this year.
And for those watching at home, that is our IT Director Spencer Tenike. And also in the back of the room, uh, Chief Toomey from the Watertown Police Department was nodding his head when our Public Works Director was speaking, confirming what our Public Works Director was saying.
Okay.
Councilman Danforth?
I'll ask just, uh, of Amanda and Kristen, it really might be a Chief Toomey, uh, answer. I don't know that. But is, is our collection of, of funds from our partnering counties, uh, that where we provide that service, is that completely limited to the fees that come from the cell phone bills? Or can that be expanded beyond that? Do you have the ability to go beyond that? Let's, I'm just, I'm going to ask the question, if, if it's 100%.
Yeah, currently it's just the fees.
Just the fees. And my question is, are we by, by state statute limited to that cap? Or are there other things that we could do to account for, uh, additional revenue? Does that make sense?
We'll have our Chief of Police, Tim Toomey.
I'm going to catch you cold. Yes, the, the fees for any 911 services were limited to the surcharge. But if we're doing other business calls, after hour calls and those types of things, uh, we're constantly looking for additional revenue and that source, bringing on more counties. We also have our REAM partnership where they, they pay for services for information exchange.
Is that acceptable, Councilman Danforth?
No, it's not acceptable, but it's a good answer. Alright, thanks, Chief.
Thank you. City Manager Mac, back to you.
E911 personnel, uh, we did add a communications manager, started July 1 of 2021. So that's reflected in the 22 budget. It's about a 13.8% increase. Operating, no significant changes, no, um, significant requests. Capital outlay, um, we're requesting 13,500 for computers, conference display and meetup. I'm assuming that's some kind of software. Library fines fund, uh, 61% is operating expenditures, 39% is capital outlay. We're looking at a decrease on the revenue side of about $4,000 in fines collected and about $5,000 decrease in miscellaneous revenue. No significant changes, um, from, on the operating side. And capital outlay, um, looking to purchase about $23,000 worth of computers and equipment. Urban renewal, significant changes, the special assessment decrease, uh, will amount to about 35,000. Sioux River watershed project, 60% is personnel, 40% is operating. Uh, some significant changes, about a $75,000 decrease in the EPA grant. Uh, we're looking at an increase of 20,000 in contributions, uh, and an increase of 40,000 from the Lake Compeska Water District contributions. Some significant changes on the personnel side, um, our coordinator is retiring, uh, mid-year. So we're, uh, budgeting for half year salary, um, as we take that time to really kind of identify what that role looks like going forward.
Councilman Paulson has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. That was where my question was headed is, do we know the direction yet? Are we replacing?
We do not know yet.
Oh, okay.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I, excuse me, I, I see that we are counting on, uh, the 50,000 for the municipal utilities again. Uh, i- is that for certain that we will receive that?
I have not heard differently.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Significant projects, shoreline stabilization, an increase of $33,940. Oh, that went fast. Any questions on that? Alright, TIF 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 funds. Should be a dance. So you can see, uh, these charts, the, the blue indicates revenues, the yellow indicates expenditures. If you have specific questions, I will direct you to Kristen. So we have the Hampton Industrial Park, Mallard Point. TIF number five is First Avenue North, TIF number six is Pheasant Ridge. Number seven is Mallard Point, number eight's Calvin Industrial Park, Calvin Industrial Park, the Lofts, and the Marketplace. Any TIF questions?
Councilman Paulson?
TIF, oh, thank you.
TIF seven is Tarex, I was just going to clarify that.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay. I mean, looking at like TIF two and TIF five, we're seeing that the revenues are not exceeding the expenditures on those. Is, was that expected? I mean, uh, being new, but is that, how are we, how do we avoid that going forward with TIFs? If we're going to continue down the TIF path that we've been on?
So the way that TIFs one, two, five, and six were structured is those were upfront costs from the city. The city did the infrastructure and then they become inter-fund loans. So when you look at one, two, five, and six, that's how, how those were set up. Essentially, three was part of that. That was paid off two years. So that's one of those good TIFs where what we put in as infrastructure, we receive back in the taxes. Um, you're correct, one is kind of playing a little bit of catch-up, two's not really there, five will probably never make back what we, uh, put in for our infrastructure. Um, and I think six will, I think six is doing great and will probably end up, uh, in the next couple of years closing out. So that's kind of the way those were. Seven was no, um, actual investment from the city. That was set up more as a pay-as-you-go TIF. Um, and then the Lofts was the only one to, there again, where the city had investment. Otherwise, the rest have been set up more as a pay-as-you-go, um, between the developer and the city. So, I don't know if that answered your question?
Councilman Danforth?
The use of TIFs has changed significantly from when we first started the, the TIF for First Avenue Extension or wherever that's called. It seems like, you know, before the criteria, I don't know if the criteria has changed or what, um, Mayor, but I, I think, and it has nothing to do with this budget, but I really think I personally would like to see us maybe have a work session regarding TIFs. It seems like we're taking individual small projects now as TIFs. We've done that with, well, the Lofts as an example. And maybe that's correct, I'm assuming it's correct. But I think we need to understand how we're going to use, what's the basis for us using TIFs and understanding that. It's probably a good thing for us to maybe have a review and have Mark come and, and whoever can, can contribute to that. But like I said, it, it's, it's certainly different today than when I was first involved with them. Uh, seems much easier to get a TIF and, and so, and to understand the ramifications of it, because there are some. So that's just a suggestion from a planning standpoint and a work session standpoint.
Councilman Beeler?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, but Mike, I, I agree. I think that's something we definitely need to look at because it, it seems like everything that, just about everything that comes about, we, we do a TIF for. In my understanding originally, the spirit and intent of that was to develop blighted areas. Areas that you'd have difficulty, that you could make use of those areas to, to, for building. And I, I, I am also a little bit concerned that we're setting some precedence here. You know, um, it's going to be difficult to tell somebody else they can have a TIF when we've just given one to somebody for a very similar type of construction project. So I, I wholeheartedly agree that we do need to get, it would be good to have a session to discuss that.
Well, we will, um, we'll work with Mark at the WDC. Uh, Toby Morris is sort of a resident expert on TIFs, uh, within the state. One thing to make note, make note, you know, the law did, um, change a little bit and expanded the use of TIF for economic development. So it was, uh, the original intent was blighted redevelopment, um, and it just transformed a little bit over the years. But you're exactly right. We need to be really responsible and look at the long-term ramifications, um, of what those do.
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I agree with Amanda. You know, the law has changed. I did some research into some time back and, and, uh, for, you know, for affordable housing was, was, was one of the terms they used and, but it, it's more for development. For example, like in green, you know, areas of outside developments outside of a, of a town or on the edge outskirts of a, of a city. So yeah, I'm, I'm with Councilman Danforth and Beeler and whoever else that, to really research this and kind of get a feel for where we're going in the future for this.
Councilman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of comes back to my question that I asked is, I mean, the point of a TIF is to increase your tax base or revenue. And that's why, uh, seeing TIFs that are older, that are not catching up and the revenue is still not there where it should be in, in my eyes anyways. But I did ask this at the municipal league conference to a few different cities and how they started using it. And, um, you know, the, the redevelopment or blighted areas, um, that's how everyone was using it. And then when the law changed, now you're seeing, I mean, even I was talking to Sioux Falls individuals and they said that they're starting to look at even newer development because they're trying to utilize their, their TIF in the correct way too. And, and, uh, I think it is a huge need, uh, and a tool that we need to continue to utilize to increase our development talent, because we need people to live here. And, uh, I mean, everyone's suffering for workers throughout the United States, it's not just us. But I think that, um, we've gone down a good path, but we just need to be really cautious going forward, making sure that we're using them for the right thing and make sure that we're not running into the issues that I see on TIF two and five, uh, when they're older TIFs, not making the money back.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper?
Just a couple of comments on that. When I was on the council before, um, we never used a TIF. I think for years, the city of Watertown underused TIFs. Now I think we're to the point of, well, I wouldn't say that we're overusing them, but to the point where we're all looking at it as, do we need to be a little bit more cautious? And I would agree with, with, uh, Councilman Danforth and Beeler that it's probably time that we sat down with, with, uh, WDC and, and had a good meeting and, and discuss the proper and, and, uh, kind of bring us all up to date on it, so.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would just weigh in too that I, I agree completely. Let, let's sit down and take a look at them because I don't think a lot of us understand how they do operate. Because every time one comes before us, I've got to go back to the drawing board too, uh, and, you know, get it clear in my mind. But I agree completely with what you said, Kyle, and this is a, a valuable tool that our developers are using and they're just utilizing the, the, the laws that are available to them. And as long as we're prudent as a city, uh, in our approval of them, I'm all in favor of continuing to use them. But again, I'm all in favor too of, of, of having a work session or whatever to, uh, you know, do a deeper dive into utilizing TIFs.
Thank you. City Manager Mac, back to you.
The wastewater fund, 37% goes to personnel, uh, 45% operating, 15 capital and 3% debt service. So some significant changes on the revenue side, we're looking at an increase of 30,000 in interest earned, 110,000 in, uh, treasury collection charges, uh, $10,000 increase in sewer consumption and a $610,000 in revenue for servicing the debt increase. No significant changes on the personnel side. And on the operating budget, um, 23,950 for equipment maintenance and a $5,000 decrease in the sanitary rehab. Wastewater capital outlay, um, pickup for 49,500, computer equipment, 13.5 meters, 10,800, pumps, 28,600, and lab equipment at 25,700. Solid waste fund, 60% capital outlay, 22% personnel, 18% operating. Significant changes, uh, refuse collection fees increase of $110,000. Uh, we did apply, um, for a solid waste grant for cell number seven, uh, $1,050,000. Interest earned decrease of 15,000, individual tipping fees decrease of 10,000, and commercial tipping fees decrease of 140,000. No significant changes on the personnel side. Operating budget and equipment maintenance increase of 31,470. And capital outlay, uh, refuse, refuse trucks, 552,000, dumpsters and carts, 34,400, machinery and equipment, 70,500, a scraper for 840,000, permit renewal and a plan update for 33,000. Uh, the landfill cell number seven, 1.8 million. Um, I would make note that the plan is if grant dollars are not awarded, we would not move forward with this project at this time. Recycling containers, 29,500, and compost pad and pond, 314,000.
Councilman Vilhauer has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, just a question. Okay, solid waste and sanitary sewer, uh, that, those are enterprise funds. Uh, I, I know solid waste has taken a hit next year if we go through with, uh, the, the cell seven work. But in general, uh, a typical year and overall reserve, reserve balances, are we sitting okay with those two funds? I guess I'm looking at you primarily, uh, Finance Officer.
Yeah, I would like you to answer that.
Uh, Councilman Vilhauer, um, I think we're getting back to where we need to be. I think if you remember, we had not increased rates at either the wastewater or the solid waste for about 10 years. Um, and we did go through a rate study, um, we increased our rates. Along with that, we actually have a plan in place to do those incremental smaller ones. So I, I would say we are building our cash reserve up. We have relied on the SRF loans from the state, which I think has also helped to keep our cash where we want it to be. But I think we're, we're sitting solid right now.
Thanks.
Okay. Oh, thank you. The airport fund, uh, personnel services 50%, operating 44%, and capital outlay 6%. Airport fund revenues, some significant changes, changes, excuse me, um, the transfer in from the capital improvement fund will decrease, um, by $5 million, other federal grants decreasing by 250,000. Terminal building decrease, uh, 15 million, and the state DOT terminal building decrease, uh, 592,000. Questions about that? Okay. Alright, airport personnel, significant increases. We're recommending, um, adding an administrative assistant position. And we're also recommending adding a custodian position. A point of clarity on the custodian position, there's currently a permanent part-time position, uh, that's allocated to the airport. So we're actually recommending that we may make that a full-time position rather than part-time, given the, uh, new terminal, the size and, and complexity of it. Also make note that we intend to fund these positions out of CARES Act dollars that we've received.
Councilman Paulson has a question on that?
Thank you. Is one custodian going to be enough for that new terminal building? Is one custodian going to be enough for that new terminal building?
Gosh, it's a really good question and, you know, those are our conversations that we've had. We we don't know. We did look at, and you'll see in the budget book, but it's it's not actually a recommendation, so we will change that. We'd initially looked at kind of hiring out those services and we were looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for cleaning services. You know, the terminal won't be open until July, June, June or July. So we've got about a six-month window of of the next fiscal year to really see what the needs are. And then we can reassess it from there.
And then just a follow-up to that is with our airport seeing record numbers month after month, which is amazing to see. Is that showing an increase in revenue then? Or is it still kind of what it is?
I don't have a good answer for you. That's a really great question.
It is seeing an increase in revenue. There's been some changes to like the baggage fees and stuff like that. I think the big thing too that's changing is with the terminal, the hanger, sorry, not the terminal, but all the hanger rentals that have recently. And we just did a, I think it was a reevaluation kind of of what those charges are as well. And I think we'll continue to look at what we're charging for the the hanger rental as well.
Councilman Danforth had a question.
I'm just, I'm just looking at what our issues were when we opened up the wellness center. And we worked extremely hard at trying to line item predict what that budget would be and we really fell short in two areas. One was utilities. But the second one was in our our maintenance cleaning and our staffing with maintenance. We were way understaffed there for what was needed ultimately. My guess is, if I may with, ask Amanda, so the the hundred and fifty that's in the book is not going to be?
Correct.
So that's out. I really question that. You're going to have this, you're going to have to have either more staff or you're going to have to hire something out because, you know, that thing operates, what, seven days a week?
Yeah.
So it just seems like that one's going to have to get looked at in some manner. So but I just wanted to say that we really underestimated the the need for really not maintenance, but you know, I say janitorial.
Councilman Vilhauer had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on what our Finance Officer said about about hanger rents out there. I've had several conversations in recent months, most recently just this morning, about there is such a demand for hangars out there and we don't have any place to put them. So it's a matter of, you know, for me to take a look at, you know, what are our options out there as far as, you know, going forward long-term as far as getting more hangers because there's really a need and a demand for those facilities.
I I can't speak to the details, but I know that this is a topic that our airport manager and the airport board have been discussing at length. I think they're in the process of updating the airport master plan, which will help identify areas for improvement to hopefully alleviate that that need. You may have more to add to that. I'm not sure.
I could, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Manager Mac. The, some of the details are, if you remember, the snow removal equipment building, for example, and some of the infrastructure we're installing for our access to that building will also help accommodate future access for future hangars and open up those opportunities for additional hanger rental space. But Manager Mac is accurate in saying that, you know, that that master plan that not only for hangars, but all the other infrastructure needs on the airport grounds is being looked at and is an evolving document with the FAA as far as that capital improvement plan goes.
Thank you.
Airport operating budget, insurance premiums increase of thirty-two thousand and seal coating, crack sealing increase of twenty thousand. Questions? And airport capital outlay, some proposed purchases, foam and dry chemical for the ARFF vehicles and fifteen thousand, computer equipment and software, fifty-eight hundred and machinery and equipment for forty-five thousand. And that is the end of my presentation. So fire away with the questions.
Councilman Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question about the hydrant rentals and I'm going to be pretty blunt about them because I think it's an egregious waste of taxpayer dollars that we are renting something that we already own. It is, it's always been frustrating to me and just seeing fifty-eight percent increase is very frustrating to see. And I'm going to go in to why I, they're starting to charge developers more money for water, water main, water install. So they're already making more money. Their revenues are increasing and yet they're still charging taxpayers double is how I see it. And I don't agree with it and I mean, I know this comes up year after year because I said, I said in these meetings. But it, I'm going to continue to bring this up because I don't agree with it at all. I don't think we should be paying for rentals that on equipment that is owned by the city. It's owned, the taxpayers have already paid for it. So why are they continuing to pay for something like this?
Could I just provide a point of clarification? So what you see on page fifty-five, two hundred and fifty of that is for the hydrant rental and the remainder is for the streetlights. I just want to make that point of clarification. I don't disagree.
Councilman Cooper.
What's the justification of, and I know you probably don't have the answer to this, but fifty-eight percent increase?
Councilman Cooper, the reason that that looks, in the past years, the hydrant rental has actually been under the fire department. This will be the first time that we're switching it to the, we kind of created, it was already the street lighting. Now we're going to do the streetlight and hydrant rental as to not throw off what the fire department really, they use the fire hydrants, but they shouldn't probably be sitting there for the fees.
So it's not in reality a fifty percent or fifty-eight percent increase, it's just shifting it from one one spot to the next?
So the breakout of that is probably more around two hundred and fifty thousand is the hydrants and the remainder is your streetlights.
So really the utilities didn't have a fifty-eight percent increase in their cost? Okay, thank you.
And I don't have the exact numbers, but we saw an increase in the hydrant and in the hydrant rental and a decrease in the streetlight costs. It was a ten to fifteen percent increase for the hydrants. Do we know what the decrease for the streetlights were? I don't have a, I don't have a clear number for that.
Can I ask what the justification is for renting? I don't understand it.
Well, City Manager Mac, would you at least explain to the public watching who we are renting from?
So we are renting the streetlights and the hydrants from Watertown Municipal Utilities.
There's a lot of people in the public who probably don't understand that part of the budget. So the City of Watertown is actually paying for hydrants and lamp posts, essentially. We're paying for their use from the Watertown Municipal Utilities.
Right.
Which is technically a city entity, but also on their own. They have their own board. So Finance Officer Bobzine.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I will add as part of the hydrant rental. So with the streetlights, we are actually paying not only for the use of lighting them and we're also paying a little bit for the replacement and when we add new ones. And then the same thing kind of goes with the hydrant rental. We're also paying for the maintenance of the rentals and then we're also paying for the ability to upsize the pipe to the hydrant. That's the best a finance officer can do, that engineering stuff.
Our Public Works Director Heath Vaughn, I would like to add on to that.
Yeah, I certainly could. Having worked on, not necessarily both sides of this discussion, but in other communities where utilities was not separated under its own Board of Directors, I do understand the concept behind what WMU Watertown Municipal Utilities is doing with this hydrant rental. You know, they're in the business to treat and distribute water to the users of their utility. And they view those hydrants as the city being the user for fire protection throughout the community. So that is their way of recouping costs for having that service to provide that, the hydrants and the water, the fire protection that they provide to the city, us being one of the users of the water system. Right, wrong or otherwise, I think that's some of the logic behind that and why that has been instilled for however many years it has been.
Councilman Paulson, a follow-up?
There's different models with municipal utilities. Some some meter the lights and you get a light bill every month. It's just different everywhere and this is, this is the structure here.
And I understand that too. I I guess being on the development side of things now too, seeing what they're doing, they're now paying for that pipe. So they can't justify it by saying that we're paying for the upsize because the developer's paying for that pipe now, which is ultimately being transferred to our taxpayers buying property. And that's what I guess is getting really frustrating is they keep increasing their revenues by charging other people more money and they're getting around it by saying our rates are low. And ultimately, they can claim that because our rates are low, but those fees are being charged in other ways. And so seeing a, essentially a tax on something that's already being paid for by our tax dollars is, that's where I'm coming. It's frustrating. This is an unnecessary tax that I don't agree with.
This conversation always tends to to get a little awkward because the, I mean, the municipal utility plays a really important role in our community. And and I think it would behoove all of us to probably, you know, bring bring these bodies together and have a real conversation about what the relationship is between the city and the utility and what that looks like going forward. And I I think we don't know what we don't know and I think they'd be willing to provide some additional information. We may not like the information that we get, but at least we'll know then how they're making their decisions. But to your point about the budget, I don't know that we have an option not to pay it.
Councilman Cooper.
Just a quick question. Does anybody have any idea how many hydrants are in town if we figure that out? I know I'm glad there's one now by my house. I mean.
Looking at you.
This is our Fire Chief, Don Roland.
To answer that question, Randy, I think it's about twelve to thirteen hundred hydrants at this time. And I can also answer to the question about the cost to Colin. I agree with you, Colin. I know there's some questions and and answers that need to be identified to some of that when it comes to hydrant rental. I've been a part of this process for twenty-nine years and myself, I've had difficulty with the fact that each year it goes up by X amount percentage and I think this year we're paying about two hundred and forty thousand. I'm not exactly sure what Kristen has in the budget for for next year. It's probably two fifty some. And and I'm glad that it came out of my budget finally, so kind of excited about that. But to state that, I know that Chief Krantz had had a a meeting with the municipal utility board as well as the previous mayor, Steve Thorson, and they went through that process of trying to lower that cost and at one time, I believe, and Kristen might share with me, they dropped it by a hundred thousand one calendar year due to the fact that they, we kind of had an agreement that was a little bit high. Right now, when you're talking about the two hundred and forty thousand that we're paying this year, they state that it's about twenty thousand dollars a hydrant to put in with the infrastructure. Now, I'm not aware of what you're stating about if private contractors are paying a lot of that or not, but I do know that we put in one hydrant out at the training center and it cost us twenty grand. So that was with the piping and the infrastructure. So.
Councilman Vilhauer.
I guess I would just, I've been the liaison for that board ever since I've been on the council now and I I agree completely with our city man, just a very delicate subject that I don't want to get too far down the road or in the weeds tonight at this discussion without someone from the utility administration or board here to defend their position. So I'm not saying I disagree with you, Colin, because we've had these conversations many, many times. There's a very sensitive issue within this community that I, in fairness, the utility personnel, they need to be here to justify or or to respond to our comments.
And I do believe, Kristen, this is part of the transfer in and transfer out as well, that that money with the utilities? What the hydrants is including in that utility expenditure versus the revenue that comes back to the city?
No, it's not. It doesn't balance.
I know we pay more to the utilities at the end of the year.
And just to explain for the public, the Watertown Municipal Utilities, they have their own priorities. They have their own board. They have their own operational priorities and one of those is keeping our rates low and we do have incredibly low rates compared to the rest of the states. So that's their priority and they're doing a good job with it. With that said, I also do hear, as I think all of us up here hear a lot from developers, that the new fee going forward or the new implementation as the rates will increase for implementing infrastructure is something that is very concerning for development going forward in Watertown. And it is worthy of a conversation between the city and WMU. Any further, Councilman Vilhauer?
Yeah, I've got a question. No place, and I don't want to, in the evening on a sour, no necessarily, but no place do we actually take a look at, and I'm looking at our general fund in particular or specifically. And if you go to our budget book or go to the bar graphs and do the plus and minuses, we're proposing right now about a three and a half billion dollar difference between revenues and expenditures. I guess I'd like to ask how, you know, Kristen, you and I had the conversation yesterday. I guess how are we paying for that and, you know, are, should we be alarmed? Or I guess I'd just like to have your comments regarding that difference.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Vilhauer. When you do look at the the actuals, the revenue to expenditures, it is about three point five million dollars. I will say that our past practice of budgeting is I take a five-year average. I would always say that we are conservative on our revenues and we don't always spend everything we anticipate. So when we look at a five-year average, that's kind of how I worked with our city manager, Amanda, to establish where our comfort zone was. Based off of that, my five-year analysis, kind of our past projections, we're looking at more about a two million dollar take from our unreserved fund balance. I know that probably seems high. Last year we were right around the three million and I will say we ended up better. Part of the reason we've been able to do what we're doing is based off of our CARES Act funding that we received in 2020. We took in around five million dollars. That's given us our flexibility. In 2021, our big focus was on our capital purchases. They were pretty high. I know the street department got a lot of stuff. We had a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grapple saw for forestry. So that was kind of what 2021 encompassed. This year, as Amanda stated, the focus was on the people. Some of those adjustments were for, for those one-time personnel kind of adjustments as well. So yes, the general fund, the way it is standing is anticipated to take about two million dollars of our unreserved fund balance.
Councilman Vilhauer.
Thank you, Kristen. And our unreserved fund balance, roughly about ten million dollars, give or take, currently is that fair statement?
That's correct. And when I do my analysis, not only do I do the five-year average and then I also put in our projections of where the fund balance will end at the end of 2020. Oh, my goodness, it's 2022. So when I do that, I'm still comfortable with where we would end up with the budget that's been proposed. I always like to keep our unreserved fund balance to that three to four months of operating and we would be sitting right at that and with a little bit extra. So.
Okay. Councilman Danforth.
Amanda, you had, on the first one, you gave the pie chart with the general fund. Do you know how, from a metrics standpoint, how does, how does our, for example, the the personnel services at sixty percent of our general fund, how does that compare to communities our size? How are we?
It's pretty spot on.
Is it pretty close? Is it pretty close?
It is.
Okay, how about, how about things like our, what we have for, when if we break it down departmentally, you know?
You know, I can't give you a direct answer on that in comparison to other communities, but all of the work that we do across the departments is very people-intensive. So it's not uncommon, you know, in the communities I've been in before, granted they're smaller, even within the departments, you see sort of that 60-40, sometimes 70-30 split between personnel and operating, because you just, you need people to ride the mowers and you need people to plow the snow. And that's where our largest investment is, from a budgetary perspective.
Any further questions from the council?
I just got a quick question.
Councilman Tupper.
How many employees does City Watertown employ? That's more curiosity than anything.
Page six of your budget book, I said 238, it's 228. With the proposed for 2022, it'd be 232, full-time.
The chair would like to ask a question for both of you, but first, question for Finance Officer Bob Zine. For the public who is, public who are watching, we have changed our budgeting process this year to a different time. Would you please explain how this has affected your job and how you think it will benefit or hurt, or what effects it will have on Watertown going forward? Because this was, it perhaps might not be a significant change for people out there watching, but it is a change in how the city of Watertown is operating.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually think, you know, this year it's probably not the best year, just because there, again, we had the change of council, change of government, so it still feels a little bit, little bit different right now. I think going forward, I'm actually really excited about it. I think what it does is it extends our time to not only see where our expenditures are coming in, and also our revenue. I think if the year of 2020 taught us anything, it's really hard to only have about three to four months of your, basically your budget done, and then you're trying to budget again for the next year. This also ties us in a little bit closer to what the utilities is doing in terms of their budget. So, I think it was a great change for us, I think that's part of the reason why other communities did it as well, is because they do see the benefit of, when you have that much more data, your budget can be that much closer, so.
I knew the answer to that question, because someone asked that to you yesterday, but I wanted that to get out to the public, because this is another thing that people might not be paying close attention to, but just another example of how the city of Watertown is trying to do our business better, to do the will of the people better. And now, City Manager Mack, don't be shaking your head, I'm going to give you an opportunity here. I wanted to, many of us have mentioned this up here tonight, and Finance Officer Bob Zine just also did say this. Watertown has just undergone some major governmental changes. I know you've been on the job for just over, you've been on the job for maybe 120 days now. I have not been on the job for, I think, maybe that long, definitely not as long as you, but there's a lot that both of us and all of the staff have had to undergo in this time. And I know that you had to come forward with a budget, but also, I know that you have a vision for Watertown going forward as to how you want to see our priorities going forward, and granted, it's up to the council to reflect those, but I wanted to reiterate to people that the priority this year was the people. We wanted to make sure that our people were taken care of, because we are a major employer in town, and we heard from the people that we needed to take care of them, and we wanted to make that a priority in streets. But, City Manager Mack, I know we're not talking about future budgets, but I wanted you to have carte blanche as far as an open mic.
Sure. Well, I guess I would, to comment on your comments about your people, as I was preparing to interview for this position, I met with a lot of people out in the community, and one question I asked every person was, what is the number one priority for the city moving forward? And unequivocally, across the board, it was, you gotta figure out how to keep your people. When I interviewed for the job, I asked the council at the time, what do you think the number one priority for the new manager is? And you all said, retention and our people. And so that's, that's part of how we crafted this budget. The other thing that, and I'm kind of a nerd, so I get excited about this stuff, but really investing some time in planning. You know, it's not the manager's vision for the community, it's your vision and it's my job to implement it. But it's also my job to help you get to what your vision is. I think those are gonna be really exciting and fruitful conversations going forward, and there's gonna be a real opportunity to engage the community in a different way, to help guide your decisions on what those priorities and what that vision is. But it takes time, and it takes resources, and with all of the big projects we have going on, we have to be very intentional about doing that work, not just creating the plan, but then implementing the plan. And I just, I've said it probably 100 times since I've been here, and I'll say it 100 times more, we have a phenomenal staff. I walked into the best team I've ever worked with. They're professional, they get stuff done, and I know that they're very excited to be a part of your vision going forward as well. I don't know if that answered your question, but that was a lot of words.
I, that was absolutely perfect, that, we live in a great community, and I think all of us together are working forward to making this a bigger, better, more exciting community, and I think good times are coming forward. So, with that...
Can I make just a quick comment, Mayor?
Councilman Tupper.
I've recently visited with, probably over the last month or so, dozens of city employees. Some of those, of course, are union employees. They've never felt so well taken care of as they have for a lot of those people who've worked for many, many years. So, my hat's off to you for working on that and all the help that you've got, because I know that was an issue, and I think you've corrected some wrongs, and I, you know, it's just great to talk to a city employee and hear their, you know, their upbeat, they're ready to go to work every morning, because I don't think we've had that in a long time. So, thank you.
Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, I'd just like to make probably three comments. You know, this is my ninth budget that I've went through, eight prior to this, being on the council, and I even asked my wife, or even fed to her today, going through this, now I really wonder why I ran for office, but again, but, but it did, this was a good, well-put-together budget. It was easy, we spent two hours together, you guys did a great job of answering questions, I appreciate that. I think the budget was well-put-together, had a lot of good data in there. But a couple comments. Mayor, the reason, and I've pushed for this for a year for a later date on our budget, because as a, as an incoming mayor or incoming council person, to come in when you're already well into your budget, that sucks, to be honest, it really does. And so for this to be later, to me, really facilitates our election process in bringing our new members into the council, into the budget. It's hard to step into it when it's already half-done. But, and then finally is, I think people have been waiting and watching, listening, to see how we're doing as a smaller, different council, and as a city manager form of government and a city manager. And over the last probably two to three weeks, maybe the last month, I have had a lot of people ask me what my opinion is of how things are going. And this is my ninth year of being on the council, and I will tell you that I really like what I'm seeing. I like what we have behind this desk and with the intent and the skill levels that we have here, but I really like where we're at with the city manager form of government, and I think Amanda and Kristin and the whole staff are doing well. I'm seeing things that I've been able to bring up or bring to staff, and I'm seeing results, okay? And it used to be that I'd bring it to the mayor, and sometimes it got done, a lot of times didn't get done. And to me, that is really what it's about, because that's what I get contacted about, I get mostly contacted about complaints. People want answers. And so, the 90 days or 100 days that we've been here, I'm very proud of where we're at, and I'm very excited about where we're going. So, thank you, guys, all.
Councilman Beeler.
Thank you. I'm gonna kinda echo a lot of the things Mike said, but I do wanna, I want you to know how much we appreciate all the effort that you're, Kristin, your team, and City Manager Mack have done, and especially to come about with, you know, this is one of the better budgets that I've seen, this is my 11th, and, you know, that, to come in and do this in such a short period of time, it's, I think it's exemplary, and I would have to concur that in this short period of time, there's very little question in my mind that we made the, we made the right decision on who we hired for this position. So, I think that bodes well for our community moving forward and with this council. And I agree, we got a, we got a great council with a lot of talent behind the desk, and Glenn, even.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Beeler, for specifying Councilman Villahower and not me, so, but thank you.
Oh, and the new mayor, too, yeah, I'll give him some kudos.
So, thank you. I have heard from the community, lots of people who say that they just sense a nice, nice atmosphere, both at meetings and at city halls, so, let's keep it going. Councilman Villahower.
I'd just like to say this morning, you had a governmental affairs meeting that both City Manager Mack and I attended, you weren't there today. I said some of the very same things to the contingent around the table that we're hearing up here, and I admitted wholeheartedly, so, keep up the good work.
I had a sick wife this morning, so, thank you. With that, seeing no more further comments, next item is items for future agendas. I will just say, we discussed a lot about TIFs and Watertown Municipal Utilities, I think both would be worthy going forward for a deeper investigation. Anyone else with any other ideas? Seeing none? Is there, Councilman Beeler?
Are we not going to investigate any further on additional personnel for parking wreck? I mean, did we decide we're not even gonna consider it, or was that...
Why don't we, we'll run the numbers and send it out to you all, and then we'll just kinda get a general consensus of where you're at on potentially adding that, and then we'll go from there? Is that suitable? Okay.
Yes.
What one, if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Just one other comment, I want to make it clear that I had discussions with Director Kelly in that regard, because I felt as though we needed more support. And so I don't want, I don't want you to think that he called me and said, hey Bruce, we gotta, you know, trying to push me to do this. I believe that's what we needed to do from my observations and the issues that we have in the parking wreck department. So I don't want you to think that Terry was pushing me because I asked the question, Terry, what can we do, how badly? So, there you have it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none? We have no need to go into executive session, pursuant to SDCL 125-2. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Shuddy, actually, seconded by Councilman Paulson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, good night, God bless Watertown.